We will get started. We'll call the meeting to order. Erica, would you mind? Doing a roll call and instructing online participants how they can call in?
Sure, thank you. I'll go ahead and announce commissioners present. Chair Silva.
Here.
Vice Chair Lataza.
Here.
Commissioner Bluth.
Rosa.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Present.
Commissioner Dawson is absent, and Commissioner Freeman.
Here.
And our staff members present today, we have our planning manager Levi Hill, Principal Planner Fernando Roveri, Principal Planner Christie Sabdo, Senior Associate Planner Chris Schmidt, and myself, Recording Secretary Erica Barrera. Information on participating in this meeting and providing public comment, including remotely by Zoom or telephone, is on this meeting's agenda, which is online at monterey.gov/Agendas. Remote commenters will be muted until as their turn to speak, and a timer will be shown on the screen. If you're connected on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. In the chamber, we recommend keeping phones and devices muted to prevent audio interference with the meeting. Thank you for participating in your city government.
Thank you, Erica. We will begin by opening up the consent agenda. Is there anybody in the public that would wish to speak about any item on the consent agenda? I'm sorry. Very good, but we're doing the consent right now. We'll do the public comments after the consent. Anybody online, Erica?
There are no hands raised.
Very good. We'll take the consent back to the to the commission. What I would like to do is to separate out the various items for deliberation and a separate vote. We can begin by doing item number two, which is recommend the city council amend Chapter 38, Section 38-112.5 of the Monterey City Code to establish local density incentives for qualifying housing projects. And so this has been a continuance until September 23rd. Any comments from commissioners on this? Can I get a motion?
I'll move that we move this item to the September 23rd agenda.
Second, so we have a motion to continue by Commissioner Lataza, second by Commissioner Bluth to continue this to September 23rd. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
You're unanimous.
Okay, thank you.
Item number three, under full disclosure, I must recuse myself from voting on this item. I did advise, I received advice from staff prior to today's meeting that I would not need to step out of the chambers because there's not going to be a discussion regarding this. So we'll go ahead and bring this back to the commission. Any, any comments?
No, I moved to continue this item, 2,400 Garden Road to, is it September? Is that a date certain? September 23rd to September 23rd?
All certain.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Freeman and seconded by Commissioner Brassfield to continue this to September 23rd. This time we'll do a roll call. Erica?
Chair Silva.
Recuse.
Vice Chair Lataza.
Yes.
Commissioner Bluth.
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Yes.
And Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
Okay, that item's been continued to the September 23rd Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you, Erica. We'll combine items four and five together. Any comments by commissioners on the minutes?
There, I don't think that a lot of us said in the first. I don't know how we're going to do that.
You can abstain.
That's my point. If you're combining, then I abstain.
Okay, very well. So we'll separate those out as well. So item number four, which is August 12th. Comments?
No.
Motion?
I think I wasn't there.
I wasn't there.
Yeah, I was there. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from August 13th, 2025.
August 12th.
12th, yeah, thank you, 2025.
I'll second that. So we can get a, can we get a roll call, Erica, please?
And before we do the roll call, I'll just note, in looking at the minutes for August 12th, those present were Commissioner Blues, Commissioner Silva, Commissioner Brassfield, Commissioner Dawson, and Commissioner Freeman.
Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry, would you say that again?
For the August 12th meeting? Yeah, so for the August 12th, we had Commissioner Blues, Commissioner Silva, Commissioner Brassfield, Commissioner Dawson, and Commissioner Freeman.
And at the risk of being tedious, my, I wasn't there, so.
You were absent.
So what, how do I vote?
You can choose to abstain. If you've reviewed the minutes, you can still vote on.
Okay, I reviewed the minutes. Great, thanks.
I'm so, so did we get a motion and a second on this? We did. Roll call please.
Sure, Chair Silva.
Yes.
Vice Chair Lataza.
Yes.
Commissioner Bluth.
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Lataza.
I already said yes.
Sorry.
That's all right.
Commissioner Freeman.
I get to vote twice.
Yes, you guys are in different orders now.
Who's on first?
Okay, moving on, item number five, which is the minutes for August 26th. Comments by anybody?
This was the adjournment, so no one would have been present for this, but if you've reviewed the minutes, you can still vote on the adjournment.
I move to approve the August 26th minutes.
Second.
Second.
Very good. So we have a motion by Commissioner Lataza, second by Commissioner Bluth to approve the August 26th minutes. Roll call please.
Sure, Chair Silva.
Yes.
Vice Chair Lataza.
Yes.
Commissioner Bluth.
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Yes.
And Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
Okay, those have been approved.
Thank you, Erica. Okay, so now it's your turn. So we have, we're going to open up public comments. If anybody in chambers or online would like to speak to the Planning Commission regarding an item that is not on today's agenda, you may come up to the podium and state your name.
Hello, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Marsha Ranzulo. I'm a resident of Monterey. Many of us have experienced firsthand what it's like to have a rooster next door or a few houses away. They often wake us up before dawn, crow throughout the day, and can be heard from several blocks away. We would like to propose updating the City of Monterey's municipal code, Section 6.6 on domestic fowl, so roosters are not allowed. Egg laying hens could still be permitted. Let's talk about the noise issue. As you know, Section 38-111 Performance Standards A Noise sets the maximum decibels for different zones. And in the residential area, which is where a lot of us live, the maximum decibel is 60. Well, the average decibel of a rooster is 130, so that's more than double. So they're already out of compliance. Anyway, in addition to causing excessive noise and disturbing the peace, roosters can be used in cockfighting, cause a public health risk if waste is not managed properly, cause foul smells, invite pests, past diseases to humans. Currently, Section 6.6 Restrictions on Keeping of Domestic Fowl states, "All chickens and other domestic fowl should be kept and maintained securely in an enclosure as provided for in this section." Well, the issue is this ordinance is very broad and really only addresses the type of enclosure needed for the domestic fowl. And it also says and refers to a chicken, which can be either a male rooster or an egg laying female hen. So proposed solution, update 6.6 to allow egg laying hens, but roosters would not be allowed in the City of Monterey. We wouldn't be alone in this. Let's follow what our sister cities are doing. Marina and Salinas have both done this. They've updated their codes. The City of Marina, they updated, they have a Section 1742-160. It was passed in 2013 and amended in 2020. And they define a domestic chicken as an egg laying female hen. And for the purposes of this section, domestic chickens shall not include roosters. So they're excluded in Marina. City of Salinas, what do they have? Both chickens and roosters are not allowed in their city limits. Why? The city council member said the city lacks animal control services. Hmm, Monterey, we don't have animal control services either. Something to consider. What would be the benefits if we updated this? We'd have reduced noise pollution, reduced risk of cockfighting, reduced sanitary risks, reduced strain on the police departments. And all these benefits will contribute to an improved quality of life for a more peaceful and harmonious Monterey community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
My name is Marilyn McDonald, and I'm also a resident in that area. And I have to state that there is a lot to be said for peace of mind. These roosters are very annoying. And if you know anything about roosters, you know they only didn't just crow in the morning, they crow all day. So they're loud, they're very loud, they're noisy, and they deserve my peace and the peace of my neighborhood. I'd like to have an ordinance and to keep up with the other people in our finisla for not allowing roosters. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Erica, any hands waved online?
There are currently no hands raised.
Okay, we'll close the public comments and we'll now open up the public hearing. We'll start with item number six, 1173 Ninth Street Use Permit Application UP-25-0053 to allow conversion of an existing commercial office building to single-family dwelling with expansion of floor area. Applicant Jeffrey Edmonds, Edmonds Home Design, property owner, Heavenly 2022 LLC, Commercial Office and Professional District, Development Control and Emergency Shelter overlays, zoning district, Commercial General Plan land use designation, exempt from CEQA, et cetera, et cetera. Boy, there's a lot there. So Chris, would you like to provide us with a staff report?
Yes, thank you, Chair Silva. My name is Chris Schmidt. I'm a Senior Associate Planner with the city, and I've been working with the applicant and the owner on this project. So we are looking at a use permit at 1173 Ninth. This is a conversion from office to single family. And the staff recommendation to the Planning Commission is that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution approving the use permit for that conversion. So here we see the sites located in the Oak Grove neighborhood. It has a CO, Commercial Office zoning district that's located within that zoning district, and has a D2 overlay, which is the development control overlay, as well as an emergency shelter overlay, which permits by right emergency shelters. So typically, the D2 overlay just adds that additional layer of Planning Commission review, where the Planning Commission can add conditions of approval for neighborhood compatibility. In this case, the staff has only recommended the standard conditions. So the project involves conversion of the existing office space to single-family residential. The existing building is approximately 850 square feet, and it was originally constructed as a single-family dwelling, but was later rezoned and converted to an office use. So they're looking at returning it to that single-family use, as well as an approximately 1,255 square foot addition, including a two-car garage. And here is the site from Ninth Street. So Ninth Street, if you could imagine, it actually dead ends just to the left here, where you have various uses surrounding. So on the right, we have residential uses. If you could imagine kind of behind this view, you have a couple of different commercial uses, as well as some other nearby uses, hotels and multifamily, other types of uses. And so here's the site plan, identifying on the left the existing structure, and on the right, the proposed addition and improvements. In orange is the existing structure, and of course, in blue is that addition. So in order to approve this application, the Planning Commission has to make three findings. The staff was able to make all three findings, including the first one, that the use is in accord with the objectives of the zoning code, which is the chapter reference here, and the purposes of the zone, the CO zone. This use is permitted by use permit. It includes required parking, which is a primary concern for these conversion projects. It meets the development standards, including setbacks and the requirement for landscaping, et cetera. And it is in the, in keeping with the neighborhood scale of the surrounding developments. The next finding has to do with compatibility, consistency with the general plan and the sort of impacts that would be associated with the use on the surrounding neighborhood in reference to the public health, safety, or welfare of persons residing or working in the neighborhood. Staff was able to make this finding. It is consistent with the Commercial General Plan land use, which does allow up to 30 units per acre. Of course, this is one single unit, and again, is compatible with the neighborhood character and includes required parking. And the last finding is that the application will comply with the required conditions, just as I mentioned, the standard conditions apply. So with that, staff recommends approval of the application. The project applicant is here. The owner was not able to make it, but they did submit a public comment, of course, in support of their project, which they intend to live in in the future. Thank you.
I think they did write a letter.
They did, yes.
Yeah.
Any questions for Chris?
I have one question. So, you know, our 3,684 units, whatever we have to add, this, this is one.
That's right.
Okay, I thought so.
Question?
One day at a time.
One day at a time.
Chris, I have, I have a question. It's more of a global than specific, but considering that this is a resident, it's a conversion to residential, would the, like the state's Housing Accountability Act and objective standards apply to this?
I don't know the answer to that question. It's a good question.
So at the point that it becomes a housing project, as defined, it would, those requirements would trigger.
Okay.
Isn't it over three units?
I don't recall. I don't think a single family doesn't apply under Housing Accountability Act. I don't recall. It's got to be a multi-unit. I don't know if it's three. It might just be two or more.
I thought it was any housing project, but I could be wrong. Yeah, I was just curious.
I can, I can add a little bit. The objective design standards apply to SB 35, SB 9, which are two, so SB 35 is when it's two or more housing units. So it wouldn't apply to single-family housing. And SB 9 objective standards would only apply if the applicant requests SB 9 approval. And this wasn't a SB 9 request.
Okay, thank you very much. Boy, it's great having a confident staff that can just whip out these answers like that.
Yeah, I wasn't, I didn't think so, but I wasn't sure.
Okay, would the applicant like to provide a presentation?
My name is Jeff Edmonds. I'm a designer from Pacific Grove and a contractor. Kelly Mai and David Mai are the owners. They live in Sacramento, but they want to be down here and enjoy the ocean. I have a letter from them I'd like to read. My names are David and Kelly Mai, and we are proud owners of 1173 Ninth Street. Thank you for the opportunity to share our home proposal. This project is very special and personal to us, our 13-year-old son and our dog Atlas. This house will be our retirement home and a supportive place for my son, who will be attending Monterey High School next year. Our goal is simple, to build a forever home where we can age in place while giving our son a stable environment as he begins high school and MPC after high school. He has ADHD and consistency is very important for his success and well-being. We chose Monterey because of its small-town feel, strong schools, and welcoming community. Our design is fully compatible with zoning required requirements, driven by our local, wonderful, and knowledgeable architect Jeff, who understands setbacks, height limits, and lot coverage. The home has been a careful plan to match the scale of nearby houses, with materials and landscaping respecting Monterey's coastal character. Since this is our retirement home, and we are also committed to building responsibly, the single-level layout home is constructed with energy-efficient systems that make raised environment and resources. All in all, this is more than just a construction project. It provides stability for our son, a retirement home for ourselves, and a safe haven for our dog Atlas. We respectfully ask for your support, and we truly look forward to making Monterey our forever home. Says pretty much most of it. Any questions or comments?
Thank you for your presentation. Is there anybody in chambers that would like to speak before this item? Hands waved online, Erica?
There are no hands raised.
Thank you, Erica. We'll take this back to the commission. Any, any comments?
Seems like a great, worthy project, and again, an addition of one to the housing element. Can I go ahead and move to, did you want to say something? I don't want to interrupt.
No, I'm just reading.
Okay.
It has a great design. It's a nice craftsman design, very appropriate to the neighborhood.
I think so too.
I think that this is one of those rare applications that we don't often get that is 100% consistent with all of the zoning land use policies. And so it's really a slam dunk from, you know, an approval standpoint.
It also provides an example for other people who might want to convert a commercial use to residential and, you know, continue to develop a neighborhood, which is great. So I moved to approve 1173 Ninth Street, the use permit application UP-25-0053 to allow conversion of an existing commercial office building to a single-family dwelling.
Second.
We have a motion by Sandy Freeman to approve, and a second by Commissioner Brassfield. Can we do a roll call vote, please?
Sure, Chair Silva.
Yes.
Vice Chair Lataza.
Yes.
Commissioner Bluth.
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Yes.
And Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
Okay, that's been approved. The decision is appealable within 10 business, or sorry, calendar days to the planning, or sorry, to the city council. We have applications online or in our planning office.
Congratulations. We will now move to item number seven, 750 Cannery Row. It's a wireless permit. I think we've seen a version of this one before. Can we get a staff report?
Yes, I believe we have. Our contract planner Jerry Hiddleman is online.
Good afternoon, Chair and Planning Commissioners. Been a little while. Good to see everybody. Can you see the PowerPoint I'm sharing?
Yeah.
Yes.
So I think some, if not all of you, have seen this project before. It's 1150 Cannery Row, and it's a new T-Mobile wireless facility, use permit 25-0157. And here's the project site. So 750 Cannery Row, it would be on the rooftop of the Intercontinental Clementmont Hotel, right on the oceanfront. The aquarium is to the north, and Bubba Gump's restaurant is to the, just below that. The property is owned by the Cannery Row Hotel Development Venture LP applicant Samantha Alpha, which I believe, I believe she joined online to answer any questions. T-Mobile will be the carrier. It's in the visitor accommodation zone, and the general plan designation is commercial. Just like the previous project, there'll be three fiberglass reinforced plastic RFP enclosures with six antennas, sticks, remote radio units, three fiber cables, two cabinets, and other ancillary equipment as needed. On, in February 27th, 2024, the Planning Commission approved the use permit for T-Mobile with the same six antennas. You'll see they're in a different configuration. They have not built this structure. So the new, this new application was deemed complete on August 12th of 2025. And you'll see again the revised antenna placement and the FRP structures as well. So here's a view of the rooftop of the previously approved project. So we had four antennas in different arrays on this side of the roof, and then two antennas on this side. The equipment also was right here. For this application, we have those same two screening enclosures, except we only have two antennas now right here, two over here, and then an additional two in this location. So we'll show those in more detail in a second. So here's the enclosure with the two antennas. This is called the beta sector. And here are the two antennas that are facing towards the front of the hotel. These are on the side of the buildings, facing towards the Bubba Gump's side of the building. And then the new enclosure has two antennas, which is towards the back of the hotel or the rear. I think you'll see it a little better on these elevations. So here's the new front elevation, and you can see the new FRP enclosure with the antennas in this area, and also towards the middle of the building back here. This is looking, this is a side view showing the two new enclosures. One towards the rear. This one has the equipment towards the front of the building. This is the little overpass that goes over Cannery Row. This is the rear of the structure. So you can see that there will be a new FRP enclosure right here. The antennas, the enclosure with the antennas in this location. And then this is looking towards the side of the building, which is actually kind of like the front of the building. And this is the, you see. kind of like the front of the building, and this is the, you see the screens over here. But we also had photo simulations uh, submitted by the applicant. We have four views. The first view is from the parking lot across the street, looking at the two antenna enclosures on the side of the building. Uh, view two would be from uh, the parking lot or the area of Bubba Gump Restaurant, looking towards the building, and then views three and four are from Wave Street, looking towards the antennas. So this is the view from parking lot across the street, and you can see the enclosure on the front of the hotel in this location. Looking from, uh, Bubba Gump Restaurant parking lot, and you can see the, only see this enclosure on the side of the building. Here, show the two views from Wave Street. So here's a view looking towards the ocean here. And then a little bit closer view, looking to enclosures on top of the building. So in our analysis, the facility is designed to meet the design code. The structural reports confirm that the roof can support the equipment. Noise levels would be a maximum twenty-point-seven decibels, which comply with, uh, city standards, but which is a maximum of forty-five decibels at nighttime. The previous submittal had, that was approved, had actually an emergency generator that increased that noise level a little bit, but they had not included the emergency generator with this new application. So as you can see from the photo simulations, the antennas and equipment are not visible to the public because of those FRP screens that would be painted and textured to match the existing building. Moving on to the radio frequency compliance, um, the compliance report prepared and certified by a third party was reviewed by a third-party consultant, and um, they confirmed that the proposed antennas would be compliant with FCC rules. No public safety limit exceeded at ground level or at the adjacent buildings. So this is the alpha sector, which is pointing towards Bubba Gump Restaurant. And as you can see, the yellow is the occupational limit. And then the blue is the public limit. Now, looking at this in a horizontal view, here's the restaurant adjacent to the building. So the occupational limit, the public limit would be um, not extend, uh, to any adjacent buildings or to the ground. Looking at the beta sector, this is the two antennas that are pointing towards the front of the building. The occupational limit and the public limit are confined to the rooftop. As you can see by this horizontal view. And moving toward the gamma sector, this is the new enclosure with two antennas at the rear of the building. And here's the occupational limit, the public limit. Now, there is a gap between the hotel and the adjacent building, so it says ground here that is actually um, I think the ocean comes in in this direction, and there are some rocks on the ground here uh, and along the beachfront. And this shows in an aerial view that gamma sector, so there is a little gap between the buildings, and that's where the RF emission array would occur. Here's a horizontal view from the RF report. So this is again towards the rear of the building, and we do have, um, a little bit that might be affect this building. This distance where appro- is approximately nine feet above the rooftop. So we do have a special condition to address that gamma sector with maybe the adjacent rooftop. So prior to issuance of building permits, the adjacent property owners with potential for RF exposure beyond the general public limit shall be notified. Um, written acknowledgement of the notification from the affected property or proof of one certified mailing attempt to notify the property owner shall be submitted to the city. Then we have our RF standard condition, so as you know from past projects, the RF signage and barriers are required for areas exceeding the, um, occupational and public limits. Um, occupational personnel must be RF-trained and equipped if they're working on the rooftop of the hotel. Again, the public is not allowed on the rooftop, only uh, workers who are working on the roof. Then post-installation, the RF compliance report is required within thirty days to be sure that what is shown to you today is exactly what the RF emissions are on the project. So with that, the staff recommends that you approve use permit, UP twenty-five oh-one-five-seven, but the recommended findings and conditions of approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Um, questions for, uh, staff?
So is there the standard, uh, safety placards and stuff that are going to be installed on any of the entrance ways up to the roof?
Um, yes, that's correct. There will be the safety, um, plaques and standards not only there, but also, um, at each enclosure. So it'd be when they enter the roof and at each enclosure.
Jerry, is there only one company having transmitters on this roof?
That's correct. Right now, it's only T-Mobile. There's no other um, wireless companies or wireless facilities on the roof at this time.
My next question is, as far as the required training, what does that entail? For people to go up on that roof?
Yeah, that, that would be, um, just an explanation of the different safety protocols that are on the signage. And then if, if need be, the, um, actual uh, antennas can be turned off temporarily if they have to work within that occupational area. So for instance, if, if one of the workers has to work over here, we, they can actually turn this off. And then also let, uh, Samantha Alpha, who's with team, with the, uh, was the applicant, explain any further training that would occur. Those are the two things I know about.
I would assume that that includes public safety?
Yes, um, in, in terms of the fire department, police department, so. Is that who you're referring to?
Sorry, would you repeat that?
Uh, would that be, uh, for instance, the fire department?
Correct. Well, police and fire.
Police and fire.
Oh, uh, I can weigh in here. So the condition is written, that's to apply for occupational personnel that's working with the facility or actually with the site, so trainy-training for the police or fire department would be separate than that.
So a roofer, um, a painter, they would maybe required to have the training?
To, yeah, be under, aware of what the signage and the warning signage means, and I mean, that's part of getting access to that area as well.
Correct. Thank you.
Can you keep this, uh, drawing up on the screen, please?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Well, thanks, Jerry. So the, the rooms that are, I assume there are hotel rooms directly underneath this new structure.
Uh, that's correct.
And the, um, even though the, um, the, uh, uh, the electromagnetic rays or, you know, projections are all happening horizontally with a little bit of a you know, pear-shaped dip below them, there, there's no anticipated uh, vertical, uh, projection, uh, of these, um, uh, of the, uh, EM waves.
Uh, that is correct, and make sure that it's all horizontal, and that's why we have that special condition about submitting an RF report after they're installed to ensure that there's no vertical um, uh, projection.
And would that report include, uh, testing in the hotel rooms underneath it?
Um, in this case, I don't think that's necessary, probably not. It would just be for the rooftop to make sure that it's we're accurately showing the projection right here.
I see. The, um, is there any engineering standards? Are there any engineering standards of, of, I don't know, lead screening or are some sort of shielding of habitation rooms from these devices?
Um, not that I'm aware of. Uh, perhaps the applicant might be aware of any of those, but, um, nothing beyond typical construction.
Okay, I mean, we've approved these sort of things before. But, uh, especially the one down on, um, Franklin Street. And I can't remember whether there were hotel rooms directly underneath them. Uh, anyways, I, so i- in the report you, you did, the, you're satisfied that these, um, these devices are going to be safe for the hotel rooms directly underneath them?
Y- yes, definitely, and that was confirmed by our third-party reviewer, ETC. Just to, to make sure that we are safe from any, uh, impacts to the public or to workers.
Right. I mean, it's really the hotel's liability, but, um, uh, anyway, that's all I have. Thank you. I, I guess I did have one other question for staff. The, what is the, um, height limit in this zone?
This property is zone VAF, so there's not a hard and fast hu- height limit for the VAF zone.
Thanks.
Sandy?
No, I don't have any questions.
Well, you actually asked one of my questions, which is related to height limit, but I do have some other questions. Jerry, what was the intent on, uh, selecting FRP as the screen as opposed to, uh, matching the siding material on the existing hotel?
Um, my understanding is that FRP allows the, um, emissions or the transmission from the antenna to go out unimpeded, if you're to use another materials that might actually block the, um, antennas from working properly. So they, they do have only special materials that can work to allow this facility to both be screened and to allow the emissions to work correctly.
Well, um, l- let me, um, ask you. I, I do have a couple of comments regarding the FRP. It's, it's, it's a plastic material, and I'm not sure if painting plastic is going to hold up, especially in this environment. Um, has that been looked at by the, by the applicant? The type of paint that's going to be used?
Hmm, uh, yeah, we can ask the applicant, but there are quite a few examples, like on other hotels more towards downtown where the screening has held up and uh, has, you know, it do match the, the, the paint color. It does blend in with the, uh, with the existing structure.
Is, is there, um, is it at all feasible, Jerry, to relocate that enclosure just a couple of feet back from the facade of the building so that there's a clean break between the massing of the hotel and, and the enclosure that's sitting up right on top?
Um, good question. I'm not sure. It might affect their coverage, but we can, uh, ask the applicant.
Okay. Any other questions?
May I ask why you would ask that? What your reasoning is?
Uh, it's really just the, the visual aesthetics of this being placed right on the facade and flush with the side of the building, and you've got, uh, fiber cement siding coming up to a parapet, and then without any kind of offset, you have this plastic screen on top.
But, but may I ask what makes the color of the rest of the building? Is I don't understand that, that, if it's just aesthetics.
That's what the concern I have is.
And that's the only way we can do anything is aesthetic. Uh, I do have a, a couple of comments. For, I can say years now on cell towers, we've tried to find some way to examine these multiple company sites. Because there is a danger that multiple companies, multiple phone numbers, and different directions of the signals. We haven't resolved that. I've been looking around, trying to find some answers, and one of the suggestion would be that wherever we have multiple companies with multiple transmitters with different phone numbers, that we put it back on the companies to come up with a single phone number, hazard plaques, et cetera. Instead of the city trying to be responsible for mitigating this multiple danger. I think that's something we could examine.
Mike, is that a question to the staff?
No, it's, this is, oh, you're right. This is a commentary. We're getting into that.
Let's try to limit the comments. Thank you.
Like Jeopardy, you could say, what is, oh, no, just kidding.
I, I do have one final question, speaking of Jeopardy.
You can go ahead.
There's a previous application that's still active. Is that not correct, Jerry?
That one is still active, but this would replace what was previously approved, the same company, same applicant, so they're and they, again, did not construct this facility.
And, um, let me ask either Jerry or staff, would it not be appropriate for the commission to require the rescinded, rescension of the previous approved application? Should this one be approved?
Yes, uh, so we can add a provision to the resolution that would say that this action, if approved, repeals the previous, uh, approval from this applicant at this location.
Right.
I guess I do have one final question for Jerry. So Jerry, the, um, there was a part of the report that talked about the sound. Um, uh, you know, the decibels of sound from these devices?
Correct.
So the, uh, the twenty, uh, point seven DBA. Um, a- also for the hotel rooms below, I know you're supposed to have sound uh, barriers between hotel rooms, but I'm not sure about the ceiling. Uh, is there, you know, is there any? Uh, you know, maybe it's not our purview, but, but, you know, are these hotel rooms below these devices going to be uh, hearing these devices, uh, twenty-point-seven DBAs?
They, they would be screened by the material on the roof, obviously, so it'd probably be lower than twenty-point-seven. It'd probably be maybe indistinguishable from the, um, if they had any air conditioning or other systems in the rooms. Um, these are from heat exchangers, and again, well below the forty-five decibels for the, uh, maximum nighttime uh, noise levels.
Okay, thank you. Jerry, is there a shot clock on this application?
This is a new application, so it's a hundred-and-fifty-day shot clock, so that takes us pretty far out till December or January.
Would the applicant like to, uh, provide the commission with a presentation?
I'll go ahead and allow the applicant to speak. Samantha Alpha, you can go ahead and speak. The applicant is unmuted. Samantha, are you online?
Let's have the applicant come back after public comments. Anybody in chambers would like to speak about this application? I don't see anybody online. Erica, any hands waved?
There are no hands raised, but once again, information on how to participate remotely by Zoom or telephone is found at monterey.gov slash agendas. If you're joined by telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute.
All right, let's try Samantha again.
Samantha's been unmuted. They had their hands, their hand raised and
It seems like there may be some technical issues at their end.
Possibly.
Well, I'm going to take this back to the commission since it seems like this is likely not to have the technical issues resolved in a timely manner.
It looks like, do we have a raised hand again?
The hand is raised. And they are still unmuted.
Okay, it appears we're still experiencing technical difficulty.
Well, I'm going to bring this back to the to the commission. Any any comments, deliberation?
I don't have a comment, but thank you, Peter, for saying that we should rescind the original active application and just replace with this one so that you're they're not doing double. Thank you.
Terry?
You know, I'm okay with this application. It's it seems like the the public safety, health and safety issues are really rigorously researched in this report. And also we're sort of, our highest hands are tied in a way. The only, like Commissioner Brassfield said, we have aesthetics, but the buildings down there are so big and massive and it's I'm not I don't really care if the thing is offset or not, you know, this little doghouse on top of the Clement. So I'm probably in favor of the project.
You know, I think I was thinking about your comment about the aesthetics and actually it kind of fits that Cannery Row industrial look. I mean, those extra structures on the top could have been like elevators or some type of old equipment that might have, you know, been used in the cannery. So I think it kind of fits the the specs given, you know, those kind of additions. And I guess it depends on how well you use your imagination, but.
Mike?
That was the reason I asked the question because the aesthetics is one of the things that we can impact in these cell towers. And he brings up a good point that it fits in with the industrial look of Cannery Row. So yeah, that's one positive. Regarding my previous comments, we have still not been able to train or produce material to train our public safety people who would have to walk upon those roofs blind. I've been done. I've been at Cannery Row fires. I have seen where people, what firemen have to do. I want to make sure that we're not covered and that we're not covering them with these unintentional RF data. We don't have enough information. So I do recommend that we continue in that regard. Thank you.
Did you want to make a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion. We accept this. This this project as stated in the description rather than quote air all the numbers and letters.
Sure. And I can read up that special condition that you mentioned earlier regarding the previous.
Rescind the original application along with.
So there would be a motion to approve the item as submitted with the inclusion of the additional special condition of approval that the previous approval under resolution P 24 dash 006 shall be repealed with this action.
Can I get a second?
Second.
I'd like to just make a comment. I see where you're coming from. I don't agree, but I don't think I'm going to get support on the commission. So therefore I think we're just going to go ahead and approve this. Can we get a roll call vote, please, Erica?
Sure. Chair Silva.
Yes.
Vice Chair Latassa.
Yes.
Commissioner Bluth.
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Yes.
And Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
Okay, that's been approved and it is appealable within three days to the city council. We have applications online or in our planning office.
Is it two days or three days?
Three days.
The meeting procedures indicate two days for wireless applications.
I believe it's three. Let me confirm. Bear with me, I'm looking through the code right now.
Do we want to make another comment? It's troubling when we can't get the applicant on the phone. To answer your question.
And they have wireless too. They can easily log in.
Doesn't happen often.
No.
Office, but it is troubling.
Yeah.
And I think it must have been on there.
They were probably using AT&amp;T and not T-Mobile.
Apologies, there's a lot in this chapter. All right, I'm not seeing it here. Code's not prescribing a specific deadline.
It's I found it. It's section 38 dash 207 says for for a wireless facility application controlled by section 38 dash 112.4, which is the wireless section of our code, any appeal shall be filed or taken or action taken pursuant to section 38 dash 208 within three business days from the date of the planning commission's decision to approve or deny a wireless facility application.
Thank you, Chris. So I think we need to update the meeting procedures instructions because it does indicate two days.
We will do that.
Okay, so any committee member comments?
On the chickens. I remember clearly Julie Kenner having a rooster and I think she was told that she needed to get rid of it. She has the house on Jefferson and Pacific. So I think they're, and I remember we have chickens in our backyard, at least we're down to one right now. And the city told us that we couldn't have roosters. So my impression was that the city had rules which didn't allow roosters, but would allow you to have four chickens. You know, and practically.
It's my understanding that there's not a distinction that's made, but I'll just point out that those rules come out of, as as the public commenter noted, that comes out of chapter six, which is animals and fowl, which is not actually within the purview of the planning commission.
Levi, can I ask the point of order? Because this item came about as public comments for an item not on the agenda, would that preclude us from making any comments regarding this item?
Not any comments if it's regarding what the procedure or next step in addressing an issue, which was kind of, I think, what is being asked. But yes, typically we like to limit comment or deliberation on non-attendised items. If it's something, again, if it was something that the commission wanted to agendaize for further discussion, you could direct staff to do that. But that's why I was just pointing out that it's actually not out of chapter 38, which is the zoning code. And then Monterey City Code, it's actually in chapter six.
And what is chapter six?
Animals and fowl.
Is there a, any kind of public body that oversees this?
City council. And I believe these comments have been made at city council.
Any other comments?
I have a question. The the thing that we're going to do next meeting on 9/23, recommend the city council amend chapter 38 to establish local density incentives for qualifying housing. Does this have anything to do with the city council decision to allow to split an R1 lot into six parcels?
No. So what you're referring to is the action that the city council took to adopt the SB 9 ordinance for the city. This is a separate separate initiative.
So I read somewhere that there's a new state law that exempts certain projects from SEQA. Is that true?
There were new SEQA, there's new SEQA legislation that was signed into effect that expanded the exemptions for residential infill projects. That is true.
And will that affect our review of projects?
It will affect the SEQA determination that is made for some qualifying housing projects that meet the requirements of those exemptions.
Certainly. Thanks.
Any other comments? Thank you. Levi, would you like to give us an informal staff report?
Gladly. So just as noted in the report, follow up from the September 2nd 2025 city council meeting, the council did complete the second reading of the rezoning ordinance associated with 817 Martin Street. If you recall, that was rezoning associated with the Mills Act contract and historic property that came before this commission not too long ago. And then also noted on the staff planning office update is the two items that are tentatively scheduled for September 23rd, which of course are the two items that were continued for tonight's meeting.
I think we should probably have you ask which commission members are going to be attending that if they know.
Sure, we would love to take a, yeah, we'd love to take a quick poll of who is going to be able to attend out of this group. This is for September 23rd. So we've got four.
Terry, you're going to be taking my place for that one item.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.